And I know we're being timed, but how much time do we have?
Three.
Three minutes. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. It's good to see you out there. I'm trying to figure out if we have more district reps or more candidates, but it's good to see everybody. My name is Paul Cashman. I'm representing District Six. While I know we're at a House District Nine meeting, you are seated in City Council District Six. You're also seated in my neighborhood. I live about four blocks north on South Elm Street. I'm completing my second term on Denver City Council. I am running on the April ballot for my third and final term. We are term limited at three and would appreciate your vote, even though at the present time I am running unopposed. As far as, you know, when we talk about major issues, when I ran the first time in 2015, I would tell people, you know, the big issues are climate change and getting dirty money out of politics, and the rest are all tied for second place. We're making some good efforts on climate change. We're making some good efforts on getting dirty money out of politics. Got a lot more work in both of those areas. Obviously, if you look at major issues, you talk about crime is too high. Homelessness is too high. We've got a lot of obvious, important issues. It's too darn expensive to live in Denver. What concerns me a great deal is kind of what's hidden in the midst of all those issues, and that's the crisis with Denver's families right now. We've all been impacted by the pandemic, but I was appointing on the mayor's children's cabinet. We met for the first time the other day. And a couple of statistics that are really important. In the past three years, 67% of Denver's childcare centers went out of business. Two-thirds went out of business, have not reopened. Where are people going to find adequate childcare? It's obscenely expensive as it is. The other statistic that really stuck out at me statewide, 20% of all first-time moms, 20% of all first-time moms, lose their life to drug overdose or suicide in the first year. The sheriff talked about the fact that while unfortunately he always has young people in his jails, in the past couple of years, there's more young people in jail for more serious crimes, murder, other crimes of violence. We need to get to the root causes of what's creating this crisis with our young people, support our families and our youth. And I've got about three seconds left, so I'll give it back to the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Is Councilwoman Amanda Sawyer here?
All right.
Running for reelection in District Five.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Good morning, everybody. This is going to be a long one, so I won't be insulted if you need to like get up and stretch or get some coffee. I'm Amanda Sawyer. For those of you who don't know me, Denver City Councilwoman representing District Five. So if you are north of Leetstale, you are in Council District Five. I am an attorney. I have my MBA. I've been on council over four years. I'm a local mom. I've got three teenage daughters. I feel you on the Taylor Swift thing. Yeah, that was brutal. Thank you, Robert. So, you know, it has been my honor to represent you for the last four years, and I am really looking forward to another four years on council. I ran for office four years ago because people kept saying to me, "I don't feel like I'm being represented." So I've worked really, really hard to ensure that I am engaging with community, getting out in front of people, asking you what the things are that you are concerned about, and then finding solutions to those problems. So I can tell you, because you've told me, the three biggest issues in Council District Five that our residents are concerned about are crime, traffic, and homelessness. Right? So what have I been doing about that crime? I've directed over $800,000 in city and ARPA funds to community safety programs that are engaging with community members. Last year, I took almost 1,000 weapons off the street in a gun buyback program. And by the way, there is a state bill that's coming up for a grant fund to start funding gun buyback programs in 2024. It's got a little bit of a problem. I want to talk to you guys about that. So crime, right? We're looking at that, working very, very closely with our police department and also with community members who have a lot of concerns about our police department, and that's fair, right? Everybody deserves to have a seat at the table because this is about our residents. So crime, traffic. I engage a traffic engineering firm. Every year, we do a traffic study in conjunction with neighborhoods to look at how to design and install traffic calming measures to make our roads safer so people out in East Denver can get to places safely. And then homelessness. The best way to stop homelessness is to stop it before it starts. Right? So I've worked on things like eviction right to council. I've worked on a number of different proposals and projects. You know, our inclusionary zoning law, thank you again to the state for allowing us local control to do that, is going to be a big deal, but that's a long period of time. That's a long runway. So we've got to look at some of the different things that we can do in the meantime to fill in those gaps. So I have very little time. Feel free to reach out to me. Happy to talk more about everything. I do office hours every week, so you can always get ahold of me. DenverGov.org/DistrictFive. And looking forward to connecting with you all. Thanks again for having me.
Thank you. Three minutes is short! And you had six seconds to spare. Look at that! There is one more candidate who will be on the ballot for the seat in District Five. That's Michael Hughes, and I believe he's here.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Morning, everyone. Mike Hughes. I'm running for Council District Five. And I have been spending a lot of time with voters in Council District Five, and we'll do more of that. I have been hearing a great deal about basic city services and the failure of the city to really step forward and provide the things that people expect. Trash pickup on time. Snow removal has been a constant topic as I've been walking through the district and talking with people. Of course, we all think a lot about what's immediately in front of us, and so they're seeing me stand on their doorstep in the ice, and they think about ice and snow. And the core service of public safety, the police presence in their neighborhood or the access to quick police response when there is a crime that happens in their neighborhood or happens to them. And so I'm hearing a lot about the need for Denver to really focus in on basic services that people need in order to go about their daily lives. One of the reasons why I wanted to run is I've been doing public policy mediation and conflict resolution for the better part of three decades professionally. I have my own business called Hughes Collaboration, and I've been working on the toughest public policy issues that I can find, bringing community together, bringing the key stakeholders to the table, and building consensus to find solutions that deeply solve the real problems that we're facing as a society. I want to be able to bring that skill and those strategies to council and to the work with the new mayor. We have an amazing opportunity with the new mayor, with two new at-large city council candidates to really do some hard work on crime and safety. And for me, at the top of the list is also housing and housing affordability. And while we have to do more on tax-supported affordable housing, I want to really energize the private provision of market-rate housing at a cost that people can afford. And that means we have to increase the supply of housing so that people have housing choices at an affordable cost. And when I mention that to people in the district as I'm talking to you today or staying on someone's doorstep, the first thing they say is, "Yeah, but parking in congestion." So for me, it's not whether to build housing, it's where. And so I think there are enormous opportunities to pair significant transportation improvements with housing supply so that we can provide the housing that people need. So that if you teach here in Council District Five, you can live here in Council District Five and have a reasonable opportunity to get to and from work without adding to the kinds of congestion problems that we have. I run a Transportation Management Association, one of the projects for my business. I run the West Corridor Transportation Management Association. So we are working with Denver Housing Authority, for example, in the Sun Valley, and helping them provide transportation for affordable housing projects. So we'd love to talk more. HughesForDenver.com. I'll be seeing you in the neighborhood, and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. There are two candidates running for Council District Four. It is an open seat this year. Councilwoman Kendra Black, who has served in that district, has decided not to run this year. I'm going to call on the two candidates in the order in which they signed up to be candidates. I didn't know of any other way to choose which one. So would you please welcome Tony Pickford, who has been in the race for almost a year?
Good morning, good people of HD9. Can everybody hear me? Great. So happy to be here. My name is Tony Pickford. I'm ready to be the next Denver City Council member to represent Southeast Denver and District Four. Been highly involved in HD9 and the PCP, which is now PO a couple of times. Lydia Guzman's not here, but she's been kind of keeping me involved, and I really appreciate partnering with her. I'm a fourth-generation Denverite, third-generation product of Denver Public Schools, and I come from a long line of educators, entrepreneurs, and social justice champions, starting with my great-grandfather, who started a business in 1901 at 2636 Welton Street. The goal of that business was to provide capital for people in his community to buy property. And here I am, over 120 years later, running in part to be sure that we work on our housing and equity crisis. My grandmother was an educator. There's a school named after her in Green Valley Ranch, the Florida Pitt Waller K-8 School. My mom was an educator as well. I grew up in Southeast Denver. I attended Southmore Elementary School and Thomas Jefferson High School, where I had the good fortune of going back to TJ and coaching high school basketball for four years, which was really rewarding. I'm married to the love of my life, Robin. She's in her 16th year as a teacher in Denver Public Schools, and we have a one-year-old son that we're raising in the house that my wife grew up in. We were able to buy that house from my in-laws after they had lived there for 39 years, and we wouldn't have been able to do that unless we bought that from them. Professionally, I spent the first part of my career in the for-profit sector. I was involved in some small business startups, which was fun. The work I was most proud of was with a software company where we processed workman's comp claims for federal employees. The biggest group was postal workers, and so that was really awesome to help postal workers ensure that their bills were paid. I've been highly involved in Denver politics, in part but not only related to running ballot initiatives. I've started three, got them across the finish line. The first was in 2018. It was called Let Denver Vote. In 2019, it was Democracy for the People. And in 2021, it was Yes for Parks and Open Space. As you all know, Denver is at a critical inflection point. We've got five open council seats. The mayor's seat is open, and it's crucial that we elect leaders that will co-govern with the communities, that we're all working together to make Denver a more vibrant, safe, affordable, and just city. Please go to PickfordForDenver.com to learn more about our campaign, and we love your support. There's plenty of ways to plug in. My email directly is Tony@PickfordForDenver.com, and I really look forward to earning your support and vote. Thank you.
There's another candidate in District Four, Diana Romero Campbell.
I'm going to put it out here because I've got some things I'd like to share. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Diana Romero Campbell, and I'm running for District Four in Southeast Denver, City Council. For me, this is home. This is the place that I grew up. I was raised by two public school educators across from Bible Park, and I spent my entire career working in the nonprofit field. I chose with my husband to live in Hampton Heights, where we've raised our family. And like Tony here, it's something that I went to, you know, Whitman, and I went to Hamilton, graduated from TJ. I went to CU, DU, and also Regis. But this is something that I feel very passionate about for District Four. For District Four, but for House District Nine, I have to tell you, I've voted in this district since I was 18 years old. There's two elections I missed, one when I was in the Peace Corps and then when I got redistricted into House District Three. But for me, it has been something of advocating and working in the nonprofit field since, well, my entire career, advocating for children, youth, families, and women. And that experience has really grounded me from helping to establish a statewide home visitation program, running early care and education. It was mentioned early about those statistics of the loss of care and opportunity. That is about workforce development. But it's also about how we help and support our community. Thank you to Olden Lisa in the back for the work that you do, my family, my mom aging in place in her home that she still lives in today. We've used those resources, and that is critically important to who we are. Walking and talking, we know what the issues are. We know that it is about housing. We know it's about transportation. We know that it is about homelessness and about public safety and crime. And the work that I've done has been about bringing people together. It's been about building community. It's been about establishing and listening to the voices in our community so that we can come up with those solutions. The statistic about our seniors, there's a wealth of information and wealth of knowledge in our communities. I intend to continue to tap into that knowledge. This is why I'm running. I want to be a part of helping to build a stronger, safer, and a collective community where we can actually work together and come up with those solutions together. I know I'm having just a few seconds, but please hope to earn your vote, hope to talk with you more. Three minutes goes very fast, and that's not enough time to tell you the things that I'm interested in doing. So DianaForDenver.com. Thank you.
I'm going to call on the at-large candidates. There are two seats open. Both of our city council members at large have finished their terms and are not running again. So I'm going to take people in the order in which they signed up to be candidates. The first is Jeff Walker. Is he here?
Hi.
And he actually was the first person to sign up to be a candidate.
I signed up bright and early in the year. Nice to see everybody. It's good to be here. I live just down the street over in Rosedale. So the reason I signed up so early is because I had some things going on in my life, and I wasn't sure how I'd be able to go out and campaign and how much effort I'd be able to put into it. Things are looking good. Sometimes things look better than others, but I'm still in the race today, so I'm good. I will tell you about myself. I moved to Denver in 1999 from Cincinnati, Ohio. I grew up in Akron, Ohio. I know snowy streets like nobody's business. They didn't even bother to think about shoveling side streets back just because it was just a part of life. Since I got here, I've served on Denver's planning board. I've served on the Better Denver Bond Issue back in '07 and the Elevate Denver Bond Issue in 2017. I served on the Blueprint Denver Task Course from 2016 to 2019. I was on the task force to reimagine public safety and policing. I still serve on that in some smaller capacity, and that's still ongoing. I served on RTD's Board of Directors for two terms from 2011 to 2020 when I was turned out. So I got to feel that first hit of COVID when everybody stopped working and everything went to heck with our transit system and around the agency, in every agency around the country. I also served on the American Public Transportation Association Board of Directors, their Finance Committee, their Leadership Committee, and their Nomination Committee for the leadership. Thank you. So the reason I'm running is because I love civic engagement. I think you can probably tell by all the stuff I've done that I really, really love civic engagement. I moved to Denver a couple of reasons. I got into DU Law School. I did it for a semester, decided I didn't want to be an attorney. The other reason I came here was for the transit system. I was working on a transit project in Cincinnati, and nobody wanted to pay for anything in Cincinnati. So I said, "Well, instead of beating my head against the wall here, there, I'll move to..." Six seconds left. "I will move to someplace where it is appreciated." So here I am. So anyway, I think we have a great choice of candidates for these two positions. I really think you do. I think what sets me apart from the rest is I'm not taking any public money, for better or worse, but this is my endeavor. I don't think that you, the taxpayer, should fund my effort. I understand the reason I voted for FEF. I support it wholeheartedly. I just didn't feel that it was right for me, but it's an option, so that's the option I'm going with. And I think that's it. I'll try to wrap up early. Thank you for your time. WalkerForDenver.com. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
I'm just saying hi. James is going to talk about my run for treasurer, but I have to leave. But hello, everybody.
Thanks, Rita.
Bye-bye.
Candidates for officers for Denver County had asked about to speak, and we're aware of that. So... Sure. Although I have a feeling, like Tony, if I use my drama coach voice, I'd be fine. I'll go ahead and turn it back to you. Just be aware that the officers that are running for Denver County leadership positions are around. Rita Simons is here. James Reyes is here. Who am I missing?
Me. Can't miss me.
There you go. Back in the back. And if you have questions, you can certainly talk to them. Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Next, in order of when they signed up, is Travis Leicher, who's running for council at large.
Is this going to...
Or no?
Does the mic...
It is not.
We don't have a Zoom. We don't have a Zoom.
You need that, don't you?
I have the air voice. I was always scolded about it when I was in school. Good morning, everybody. Travis Leicher, candidate for Denver City Council at Large. I have lived in Denver for the last 16 years. I am a new Denverite, so to speak. Went to CU Boulder for my undergraduate degree. Went to CU Denver for my graduate degree in public affairs. I moved to the metro area in 1997. And before that, I had lived in five states before I was 16 years old. And so in the context of being a Denverite... Sorry, I'm moving around the stage. In the context of arriving in the metro area, I really felt, in some sense, rootless and homeless. And then when I moved to Denver, I realized that I was at home. And here's why. My first meal, and forgive me, folks, if I tell this story way too many times on the campaign trail, my first meal was at the Cheesecake Factory on 16th Street Mall. And why that meal still sticks with me to this day is the fact that I felt welcomed and included in the Mile High City. And why do I say that? Because I was a closeted gay kid who struggled with his identity, feared for his life, and struggled with what I was going to do, where I was going to live, and where I was going to be. But landing in the Mile High City was a place that I wanted to call home. And it was a place and a source of opportunity, hope, and optimism. Now, over the last 16 years, Denver's changed a bit. It's a little more, well, it's a lot less affordable for folks. It's a lot more crowded in some ways. People are struggling with safety. We see folks struggling as it relates to their housing opportunities and economic opportunity. And so why I'm running for Denver City Council is to bring my management experience as well as my leadership experience to the table. Professionally, I have worked at CU on public-private partnerships for the last 10 years. I was a senior advisor to Jared Polis before he was governor of the state of Colorado. I've worked in the women's rights movement, and I have also worked in the conservation movement. Two pride points for me in the extracurricular space or board leadership space is serving as president of NARAL Pro-Choice Colorado at a moment when the organization nearly shut down and serving as president of Capitol Hill United Neighborhoods, the largest and oldest registered neighborhood organization in the city. Why I'm proud of those things is because I've crafted the art of the turnaround. I think Denver is in need of a turnaround on the issues of housing, homelessness, customer service, and support for constituencies. So we're going to tackle affordable housing with more affordable housing. We're going to deliver on better customer service by converting 311, 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 365-a-year customer service center. We're going to invest in whole neighborhoods because there are neighborhoods across the city that have been counted out, set aside, and under-invested in. And so with your support as your next councilperson at large, go to TravisLeicher.com. I'd be honored to have your support. I have an eight-point action plan for you all to take a gander at. And thank you so much.
I want to thank everybody so far for being on time, every time. Next is Sarah Parody, who's running for council at large.
Thank you. Hi, folks. I'm Sarah. I'm a workers' rights and civil rights attorney here in town. I've been doing that work for most of my career in Denver. I own a small law firm, and through the years of representing large caseloads of clients in things like wage theft cases, discrimination cases, workplace safety cases, I've also done quite a bit of leadership within different bar associations. And so that was sort of what drew me into doing policy work. Many of our bar associations weigh in at the legislature, and I've been very interested in seeing them do that on behalf of working folks and on behalf of our civil rights. So as the leader of the Colorado Women's Bar Association, I wrote our 2019 Equal Pay for Equal Work Act, which is the reason that we now have pay ranges listed in salary postings around our state that's being copied in jurisdictions all over the country. We did that first here. And then, sorry, I worked on a number of other workers' rights bills that you may be familiar with at the state level, like the Family Medical Leave Bill. And I apologize for being flustered. I came over here straight from dropping my little kiddo off at theater class, actually, which she just started two weeks ago to sort of like fill these mornings when I'm running around doing campaigning. And my one-year-old was in our bed all night, And my one-year-old was in our bed all night, so I'm just fried, but very happy to be here, looking all your faces. And I noticed that I was still wearing my tennis shoes when I came out the door. I had intended to change into heels and be a little bit taller. But anyway, so imagine me like three inches up with my courtroom voice on instead of kind of in mom mode here. Anyway, so the reason I got into workers' rights work came from my childhood in southwest Wyoming. I grew up in a mining community where there were a lot of occupational accidents and deaths. We also got hit really hard by the methamphetamine epidemic, which reminds me quite a bit of what Denver is going through now with fentanyl. My mom was librarian. My dad was a safety manager out of a mine. And they were able to do those jobs after having, in my mom's case, not gone to college, and in my dad's case, dropped out of college. That kind of thing has gotten harder and harder and harder for people because we don't invest in each other the way that we used to. Among my clients, I have seen folks lose a job and as a result of that, end up homeless, end up sleeping in a car, end up going back to live with an abuser. I have even had clients commit suicide because they lost a job. That should never happen in America. And so that's why I have shown up for working folks throughout my entire career. That is what I will continue to do on city council. It's the only reason that I'm running.
Thank you very much, Sarah. We have gone through a little more than half of the candidates. I did not hear back from Will Chan, but you are here. Thank you. We need to communicate a little bit.
Yo, I did email. Sorry about that. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to use the mic because I'm not a theater kid. But my name is Will Chan. I'm running for Denver City Council at Large. I was born and raised in Denver. When my parents came to this country, we came for a safe haven. We came for economic opportunities. We were immigrants and refugees coming from a war-torn country and wanting to land in a place where we could start over. And that place was Denver. And that's a place where we have been welcomed with open arms, and that's a place that has raised me and taught me the values of what community means and taught me the values of what to be in a public service, be a public servant. And that's what I've dedicated my whole entire career in. Twenty-two years, 20 years in this space as a union organizer, working for workers' rights, fighting for fair wages, flavor health benefits, working as an immigrant refugee activist, working with libraries to make sure that we have open spaces to welcome other communities like my family, to make sure that we are engaging with this community in all sectors of our public life. And then most recently, in economic development, thinking about our workers' rights, thinking about how we have good wages and good pathways for our workers. So I have a proven track record throughout my career to take the actions and listen to community, work alongside you, work alongside stakeholders, to build coalitions, to come together, to really deliver on the words that you share with me and share with all the other council members, to come together, to take action, and deliver on those needs. So I talk really fast because I spent a lot of time in Puerto Rico and in New York, and so I apologize for that. But what I hope you get from that is the energy and the passion that I care about this work. This is, I've been a public servant. I will continue serving the community in Denver for the rest of my career as well. What I want to do is really address the gaps in Denver. How do we become greener? How do we become more affordable? How do we become more prosperous? And how do we become more safe? We have opportunities in all these areas. We have a long ways to go as a city, and there are a lot of things as a tipping point of where we are. But thinking about free and public transit, free and fair, free wage... Sorry. Free transit options for everyone in the city. Thinking about how we are addressing the gay economy and the workers that were left behind after the pandemic. Thinking about how we have different altruistic policing, how we're like working with women that are suffering from domestic violence. That's the highest crime in our city. How are we investing in our youth? And how are we even more prosperous, our city? We cannot lose our competitive edge, but really dividing up big business and small business and apolities in those arenas to really create an identity for our city as well. Thinking about our main streets, thinking about how we're investing in our culture and thinking about the vibrancy of our city. There's so much that we have to be proud of and so many values that we have held dear to us as a city and a community that moving forward with whatever leadership we have, I hope I can be that voice for you and be that champion, but also representation as the first Asian-American ever elected to Denver office.
Thank you. Do you want to take a break from city council candidates for a couple of minutes and hear from the candidates who are running for...
James. James, would you like to speak? You ready to go on? James Reyes would like to speak to you. He's running as a candidate for Denver County.